What a great discussion this will be. We're on item number three, which is the discussion regarding the Tiger Dam. We have Gary Meyer, Sean Wilkerson, Bill Ross, Eli Johnson, Lisa Schwartz, Jason Horn, and a host of others. Welcome. Glad to have you here. Lisa, that's not Schwartz, is it?
That's okay.
Thank you. I always try to, even though I see it, I try to fix that. Thank you.
No worries.
Okay, I think Gary.
Yes, sir.
Since you were the one kind of going around the table.
Yeah.
We also were grateful to have Rachel Van Deegan.
Van Deegan.
Van Deegan.
Rachel, you're, we can't hear you.
Oh, you can't hear me?
I think she can, but I think the volume's down. Get the remote. Try it again.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Here. TV remote.
Sharp, right? They grab their remote.
Anything now?
They're all sharps, I think.
No.
There you go. Try again, Rachel.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we're going now. We're cooking with gas.
Got it.
Harv, could I borrow your mouse from you there?
There you go.
And a pad would be great. All right. So Harvey, I'd like to introduce, or Commissioners, I should say. With us is Rachel Van Deegan. She is the sales rep that we contacted and worked with in learning a little bit more about this product called Tiger Dams. And for your information.
Hold on if I might. I think Rachel, just to be, just so you know, Rachel is the first female to complete a forward flip on a motorcycle successfully. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that.
First. Thank you.
Motorcycle intentionally, not unintentionally. There's a lot of girls that have done it unintentionally.
This is why.
Go again, Rachel. Show us all the video again.
We'll go through this real fast. We might have to have some show and tell here at the end.
Sounds fun.
So Rachel has shared with me a presentation that she created that's kind of a kind of a quick version of this. And I wanted to go through some of these stats for you guys real quickly to just kind of talk you through it. This, this product is called Tiger Dam. It's, they are their own company. However, as they have created this product, this product is, is essentially manufactured, designed, and set up to kind of take the place of sandbags. So if you think back to last year in 2023, when the county deployed roughly north of 200,000 sandbags, this is a product that would have been very, very valuable and useful to us, specifically in regards to the cost of materials and manpower it took to create those sandbags. It comes in multiple different sizes. It's got, it comes in an 18 inch, 24 inch, 30 inch, 36, and 42 inch, and those are diameters of the tube itself. The tube is intended to be unrolled, connected together, and then filled with water. Whether it's water from the floods, or whether it's water you deploy from a fire hydrant, if you have those on site, if you're in an urban environment, or happen to have a fire hydrant out there where you are. So we, we had Tiger Dam come out and do a demonstration for us. Harv, it was about a month ago, maybe. Month, month and a half ago. Does that sound about right, Rachel?
About.
So they, we had them deploy it and set it up inside Fort Wayne of Ventura. There's a particular campsite called Trapper's Campsite, which is a fairly large one, right on the banks of the Weaver River. This year, we saw the river swell out of its banks and start to flood through that area. So we actually had to deploy roughly about 2,500 sandbags to protect it this spring during the Mountain Man rendezvous. Moving forward, tell you a little bit more about the product. They've been around since 2004 is when they kind of began their genesis, but they've been manufacturing in New Orleans since 2006. This is a product that they've had multiple extensive testing done on it. It does have some very interesting certifications, particularly in regards to the Army Corps of Engineer, as well as some of the other organizations you might recognize. We work as part of the Association of State Flood, Floodplain Managers here at the county. We're a member of that as well, too. But they, they took this to the Army Corps of Engineers lab, ran it through some extensive testing, both in regards to, I'm going to call it, there's probably a better word for it, Rachel, feel free to correct me, but, but essentially channelizing or hurting the water in a certain direction, as well as wave action, if a large wave or wall of water were to hit this particular product, how it performs, how it responds, and how it withstands that onslaught of water and mass that hits it. Performed very well, very well. And, and so they have actually deployed this in multiple situations. I was talking with Rachel this morning. It's being deployed as we speak in preparation to the hurricanes that have been hitting the East Coast. She mentioned they have sold a ridiculously large amount of product out there as a result of the hurricanes and the onslaught of water and rain events that have happened out east as a result of the, the weather. It's intended to be as long of a wall as you want to create it to be. You basically line these bags out, which are sealed, the bags come sealed so that they are ready to hold water, but then you overlap them, and you actually fold them together. And the intent is that there's a, there's a sleeve that goes over the folds that once you, once they're folded together, you start pumping the water and the folds themselves will kind of grip somewhat similar to like a railroad car coupling is because you've interlocked, folded them together.
And the more, the more water you put in there, the pressure gets tighter and tighter.
It gets.
That's why they got those grooves, I saw.
Yep.
They're really slick.
They've, they've deployed this in all sorts of situations, from beach application to urban environments to you name it. They can be singularly deployed, like this particular instance shows, or they can be stacked in a number of, of basic, basically triangular, pyramidal types, type stacking, depending on how deep of a wall you, you are trying to create here.
You can even make those walls, you can put six on the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Exactly. So you can go really, really tall. Wouldn't that right, six or?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can stack them as high as 32 feet high. We are engineered to go that high, but we haven't had to do that yet. We have stacked as high as 16 feet, though.
That's amazing. 16 feet, that's an incredible wall. So the kit we will, we were looking at purchasing comes with a couple of different types of anchors. We can deploy these anchors in the dirt. You can put them in asphalt or concrete, depending on what the application is where we decide to use them, and we'll get to those locations here shortly. And you can either do it to block water from the outside, or you can contain it in a, in a localized site like the middle picture shows as well, too. Which, we'll come back to that here in just a moment. You can run them along until they get directly adjacent to buildings and just fill them up so that they're flush against the, the surface of whatever it is you're, you're stopping or terminate, terminating your wall against. And then when you're done, the same effort it takes to fill them up, you just reverse flow the pumps and pump it right back out, and they, they deflate almost down to very little residual water was left in the, the products they employed here on site for us for a demonstration. Essentially, you roll them up into bags like it's shown stacked on that pallet there. They come with a crate that we would basically just palletize this and have, have it ready to go staged inside the sheriff's warehouse out there by the jail. And so as the time comes and the need comes to deploy these, it's palletized, ready to go, self-contained with their own pumps, all self-contained within the crate itself. This kind of gives you an idea for how different options you can store this or warehouse the product. The idea being that these, this particular product should in theory have a shelf life indefinitely. We'll come, we'll come back to that, I, that issue here in a minute. But in theory, the way these are made, the way the products welded together, the plastic is welded together, it should last indefinitely, as long as you get all the water out and store them out of the sun, and they're not baked and destroyed by the ultraviolet rays of the sun. They have them, they've also used them in kind of an environmental response, which thankfully we don't have any situations like that. But then they've also used them in large-scale urban environments as well, too, which we'll come to. So that being said, I've got a few different videos I wanted to show you guys. So I took some videos of the deployment demonstration we did here at Fort Wayne of Ventura, and I wanted to kind of run through these with you. There, the videos will speak for themselves and tell you a little bit, a better idea. What did I hear?
You look really handsome on that show.
I know. That is just killer. Unbelievable. Oh my goodness. Are you kidding me? Well, let's try. Let's try one more video. I see. Ah, it's going to make me download a plugin. Okay. I was worried about that. So that being the case, I actually came prepared with another video that Rachel had provided to me, which I actually thought was very applicable. The only problem is, we have to jump on to. Harv, would you mind typing Google on there where you've got the keyboard there? Yeah, perfect.
On YouTube now?
I'm just going to paste. Oh, you're okay. Yeah. I'm just going to go ahead and paste this link. I just copied right in there. So this particular video, hit return if you would please. This particular video was an application. I'll just kind of set the video up here for a second. It's on a golf course in California. This particular golf course is downstream from an area that sees seasonal monsoonal type rain events, somewhat similar to what we have here in Utah. So they actually knew the rainstorm had happened, had a few hours to set it up just beforehand. And this gives you an idea of how it works. This is a typical little creek that flowed through the golf course that, once the rain event happens, seems massive surges of water. So with that being said, I'll just kind of give you, let you watch through here real quick. The idea being that when we start to see our snow and, and everything start to melt in the springtime, we have a few areas here in the county where we feel this would be very, very applicable and very well put to use, particularly in regards to areas that the banks are flat enough and shut, and the slopes are flat enough that it would work. So for example, anything west of I-15, our banks on the Weaver River become almost sheer vertical in a lot of cases. And having this tube of water up there that you fill with water is a little bit challenging to deploy that on. All that weight pushing down on a really steep bank could cause it to undercut and slough off, which we're not real excited about there. However, in, in pretty much east of I-15, all the way through Fort Wayne of Ventura, Memorial Park, where else? We talked about.
A lot of the areas along the South Fork.
Yeah, the South Fork. This would be a great application. We even talked about deploying it in areas similar to Willow, Willowbrook Lane, where the river is jumping right out of its bank. We would deploy this in a situation right along the edge of the asphalt to essentially elevate the bank where we've lost the bank there over the time and growth of the trees and tree roots. Quick, easy solution, takes probably two, maybe three guys to fill. When we deployed it here at Fort Wayne of Ventura, it was a 50-foot-long section of tubing, 24 inches in diameter, what we would be purchasing, took us about 20 minutes with a pump to fill it up. Two guys, easy to handle. So the two guys would essentially unroll these, hook them together the way you would do it, start filling it, and then just keep rolling it, unrolling it, and hooking it together as we go, depending on where we want them.
I watched those folks on the TV, filling those sandbags, and I thought, you poor buggers, if you only had that Tiger Dam. I mean, they're just, oh, they just one shovel full at a time, filling those bags. This is like, this is a game changer, especially with labor. And it, and by the time, really, you talk about the, this is cheaper. This will save us money.
Absolutely.
It could injure you as well, right? If they're not.
But not.
Sandbags, right?
Right.
And, and to that point, thanks for the segue, Commissioner Harvey. This, that's a great, that's a great carryover. So they, Rachel and her team had put together kind of a comparison of how this product works in comparison side by side to sandbags. So in this comparison, they had accounted for an 18-inch high wall. Keep in mind, our product that we'd be buying is that we were opting for the 24-inch tall product rather than 18. So that gives us an extra six inches of freeboard on our product if we were to deploy it. The, the Army Corps of Engineers estimates a rough cost of about $6.25 per sandbag. So the, where that cost comes from is you're looking at the cost of the bag itself, the cost of the sand, the cost of the labor to fill it, palletize it, transport it out to site, deploy it on site, and then also cost to come in afterwards and deal with the sand, removing it or dealing with it once it's been put to use and deployed. So if you were to go off last year's numbers of 2023, when we deployed north of 200,000 sandbags, that's about 1.25 million we spent in materials, labor, all of that, deploying all those sandbags last year. Whereas when you're done with the Tiger Dam, they essentially deflate it with water, pump the water out, roll it up, re-palletize it, and it goes back in the warehouse for the next event whenever we feel like we need it.
Yeah, just as a reference to that, here and I, we're going over the numbers this morning, and just the direct costs in labor and equipment hours to Joe out in the roads department in, during the floods in 2023 was over $161,000. And that's just driving sand to a sandbag location, the driver dropping it off, $161,000. Just to put a guy in a truck and move, move the sand. That didn't include filling them, placing them, removing them, any of that. That's just getting it on site to be built.
You know, and, and I'll tell you, when we were out there, I loved it when they went out there, they just took a hose, and they took a waste pump, put the hose in the river, pump the water from the river, up, filled the bags up, done. The product that you need to fill this is already, it's right there.
Right there.
So you just take it, and then when you're done, you put it right back in the river after it's gone back down.
That's right. We just reversed the hose, pumped straight out of the bags, right down into the river, didn't have a big mess afterwards to deal with. It was, it was super.
You see, oh, it was, it was really super. It was awesome. It was awesome. Couldn't believe it.
And this, this next sheet kind of gives you an idea of different configurations you can put together, how high you can stack them, and like Rachel indicated, we could, they've stacked them as high as 16 feet. And then, and then lastly, I wanted to just bring this up. Our intentions were for, this is a product that would be deployed on a countywide basis. Our thoughts were to use countywide flood control money that we have available to do this. So it becomes a tool in our arsenal that we, that we can use and deploy as needed. We had her put together a quote for us that was roughly about 2,000 feet of, of these Tiger Dam products. It comes with all the different various odds and ends that come with it. There are things like the anchor kits, the straps to tie them together and anchor them down, the pallet it's on, pumps, everything we'd need, basically so it's self-contained, so that it can just be loaded on a trailer and deployed out to the site. This would be two pallets worth, and, and the quote came in at $127,548.
That's a little more we thought it would be when we were on site.
It is. And the reason is, Harv, originally, we were looking at doing 18-inch and 24-inch. Now, the reason we opted to not do that is if they're depending on how we deploy these, if we end up having people help us, similar to we do with sandbag deployment, or inmates that aren't familiar with it, or, you know, just not knowing who your audience is going to be and your, and your labor and putting it out, we opted to just do simply one size, rather than two different sizes of material.
Okay.
So, and, and having it palletized so that we have two pallets that could be deployed different directions, added a little bit more cost and an extra pump and an extra crate and things of that nature. So. So that's essentially it. We're looking for your approval to, to exercise our stormwater money, flood control money to this, to this level of effort to purchase the.
Now, I don't know that there's another product like this available anywhere. So this would be like a sole source type. You could try to bid it out, but I don't know that I'm.
Yeah, I'd probably just loop Jason in on the conversation and just say, can we consider this as a sole source or as like a product like that?
Yeah, great.
And, and they did provide a sole source letter to us for this particular product.
There's a patent with it.
Yep. And this, this is a letter that was provided to them. Rachel, correct me if I'm wrong, but this came from the, the Army, Army, Army Corps of Engineers to give you guys this certification.
I can't see what you're looking at. If it's the certifications, we worked with FM Global and the Army Corps of Engineers for the top level of certification for flood protection. So long answer there, but yes.
Yeah. And I apologize, I'm, I'm the one running the mouse, Rachel, so it's a little tough for you to see everything I've got up going for.
It's all right. Working with it.
Rachel or Gary, do you guys know if this project qualifies for any of the hazard?
Sorry, I missed that. Any of the what?
Hazard mitigation grant programs.
It would not. Is it, it's not a permanent structure. It's a temporary structure.
Well, there's a new one. The new one is the Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities, and it's.
It's the brick grant. Yeah, it's, it's not eligible. That's for fixed infrastructure assets.
Good question, Stephanie. Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking for.
Yeah.
Always looking for breaks.
But we're looking at this as a huge benefit and a huge cost savings, right? Instead of an army of inmates and, and multiple staging locations of sand and sandbags throughout the county, this would be something that's just kind of self-contained, way less effort and manpower to deploy and clean up, and we're done.
Great. Any questions, Commissioner Bolos?
I do have a couple. So when we, when we purchased all the sandbags, some of the cities were using those. Am I right? Did they purchase those from us?
So the sandbags came from the state grant. Are they, them, around one of the money that the state approved in the legislature. So we were able to do that. But I don't know, the state doing that is kind of anomaly, anomaly. It's not for certain. So the next time around, we probably would be paying for those.
And then would we be charging the cities if we were still doing sandbags? So this is.
They would probably have to get their own.
In the past, we have not. The cities have generally asked for them. It was part of a mutual aid request, and in the past, we have not charged them for the back we provided them.
So that's leading to my ultimate question, which is, is this proposal, is this, how many? 40?
Well, it's for 2,000, what would be 2,000 linear feet of Tiger.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Which is, how many sandbags?
Oh geez. To put that in perspective, 50 feet of, of dam equates to one, oh, it's right here in front of me. 2,500 sandbags.
50 feet.
So multiply that number by what? 40?
So the number you're proposing to purchase would just be for, for the county's needs, not for any cities. So that's my question. Would we still be in a position where we have these for our rivers and, and our property in the county, but then we, we still have to go through the whole sandbag purchase, make those available to the cities? Are we going to be doing both?
Yeah, it wouldn't eliminate sandbags.
It wouldn't eliminate them, but this could be used if there was a situation in a city and the county was not being affected, we could deploy these to the city. They're purchased from that flood control budget, which is a countywide budget. So yes, they could be used in the cities.
Commissioner Bolos, last year, there was, as part of that runoff, there was a situation in North Ogden where they just got an onslaught off the, off the mountain of water where they sandbagged along an entire road for the better part of a half mile or so. This would have been a great opportunity to deploy these and help just contain the water right there.
Okay, that, so then if there were any FEMA reimbursements for an event, will we be able to get reimbursed for labor for the deployment of these? And will we, is there any way to recapture the cost of them in any kind of FEMA reimbursement?
I imagine it would be the same as a sandbag.
Because you, because they would already be purchased, we would already own them. And so would we likely lose, lose out on some FEMA money that we could if we purchased them in an emergency, say?
Honestly, no. The cost of sandbags are so, I mean, really, they're, they're, they're not a lot. We buy in such volume, when we're looking at the high runoffs, we're generally paying anywhere from seven to nine cents a sandbag. So any loss of funds, and generally all we get reimbursed for as far as FEMA dollars during an event is the, the forced labor, which is those direct costs in moving the sand, moving the sandbags. We're able to recover, I think the current rate for a volunteer filling sandbags is $7.50 an hour for a volunteer. So that would potentially be money that we would not be eligible for.
We wouldn't be using it either.
We wouldn't be using it either. But, and at the same time, to deploy one of these as far as recovering the costs, you know, 20, 30 minutes of direct labor cost to fill one of these things up and have it set up is a, a mountain of savings just on the front end where that, that we won't have to be looking to reimburse, because and, and again, this, this isn't a magic bullet. There's very specific areas in the county where this will provide a great benefit, but the vast majority, majority of our flood-prone areas in the, in the county aren't going to really, the, the, just the terrain won't apply to the system. But the ones where it will are huge for us. The industrial park out at, out at the, the retention ponds out there at the Weaver Industrial Park, those areas along the South Fork, and again, the county parks primarily, especially Fort Wayne of Ventura, aside from the direct costs in the sandbags, then having to have Joe and the roads department come in, repave, resurface the roads, recut the trails. I think it's a huge benefit for those areas specifically.
Great questions, Commissioner Bolos. We're kind of looking at this as a tool to supplement what we already have. Not essentially to directly replace sandbags altogether, but to kind of supplement it, help our response time in other areas as too, because, as well, because if you've only got a couple of guys deploying the Tiger Dam, that gives you ability to focus more manpower and energy on this, on the sandbag efforts. It probably will still be taking place in different areas.
You want to get enough, we could at least do two or three locations at a time. So, you know, we put it up on something less of a priority, and something higher comes up, we're not trying to relocate or do stuff. We got enough to cover. Yes, too. So here's my, my issue, just to, I never thought about it before, but if we only get this much, and we say to a city, hey, listen, you're going to have to come fill some sandbags. No, we'd like to use those Tiger Dam dams instead of you guys. You guys fill the sandbags. You put them up where you need them. We want to use the Tiger Dams.
Yeah, we could run into that situation where everybody wants to, right?
Oh, that, that's a commission decision. You control that budget, you control these.
Yeah.
So you make the call. We would prioritize through emergency management, the engineer's office, where should these really go? And that's where they would go.
There's going to be places that make sense and places that don't make sense.
Yeah, there needs to be some kind of a policy we need to put in place, reason why we, this is, this is why we're prioritizing them there now instead of there.
And it could be, we do, we still sandbag for Wayne of Ventura, but somewhere else. But I mean, they worked out well. We, we talked about that. Yeah. This spring, when Brad and, and his crews were deploying sandbags for two weeks preparatory to the, to the music festival, this would have been a day or two effort, and we would have had all that in place and no, no risk or fear of flooding at all. And maybe it's something we look at, kind of a bang for the buck, Commissioner Harvey, like you're explaining there. If it's something that's over a certain length of a bank that we're reinforcing or, or bolstering up, maybe we look at it that way.
Have you ever tried to put a sandbag on a river that's overdone? It's almost impossible. It's so hard. But if you deploy something like this, you could build a sandbag wall behind something like this and then deflate it and use it somewhere else. Again, you know, most important times to begin.
All right.
More questions?
Yeah, please. Yeah, go ahead.
So you said the shelf life was indefinite?
Yes, so.
If they're all the way empty, and then you said that there's usually a little residual.
Well, when we, when we pumped them out, it really deflated the water quite effectively, right? It deflated, it deflated the bags that we had deployed enough that we were comfortable rolling it up, throwing it back in the pallet, and we shipped it back to Louisiana where they were deployed from. So, yeah, I mean, you're going to, it was, it was pretty efficient. So, well, the reason I said indefinitely, they've only been in operation for the last, what, 20 or so years, right? But the way, the way we intend on storing and keeping them, Commissioner, I don't see why that would have any change to that, or out of the weather.
20 years is, is good. I didn't realize that they'd been around that long.
Yeah, and a quick note there, if you don't mind, we do have a five-year warranty on the dams. But we do stand by our product. So if something does come up, even after the five years where you're seeing some wear on the dam, I mean, it wasn't maybe vandalism that was the reason. We're, we're standing by our product, and we're more than likely going to replace them for you. You just reach out to me, my team in Louisiana, and we'll replace them.
That's great. So one follow-up question, Rachel. You mentioned vandalism. If, if there's a damage done by vandalism, are they able to be repaired, or do they have to be replaced?
Most of the time, yes, you can repair them. It depends on the type of vandalism. Of course, you don't want somebody to come by with a knife and slice. Um, it depends on the type of vandalism, of course, you don't want somebody to come by with a knife and slice them. That would be detrimental to the dam, but that's gonna cause a lot of harm to the person who might have done that. Um, if you're poking holes in them, if there's any debris hitting the dam, yes, we can patch those up.
Okay.
And it comes with a patch kit with each order, right, Rachel?
Yeah, yeah, and you can do numerous patches with that patch kit.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Great, great question, Commissioner Flor.
No, I think it, well, I do have a question, you know what we've got in that flood control, uh, account right now?
We're about over two million, just about two million.
Yeah.
No, I think it makes sense, I could see some areas up on the South Fork that we still see sandbags up there scattered along the side of the road that, you know, it's not necessarily just filling them, it's how do you get rid of those bags? Once the problem's gone, nobody wants to take care of the garbage, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
And this way, you know, Gary better get up there and get those picked back up and hauled out, so. Anyway, I think it makes sense from a couple reasons, so.
I'm okay, formally state your ask, please. So Commissioners, we would like to request permission to use our our flood control money to to for this purchase of the product right here, uh, to the effect, to the amount of one twenty-seven, five forty.
I'm okay with it, I I I do agree, we need a policy that will prioritize, or will allow us to prioritize the need.
Lisa, Eli, will you take care of that?
Yeah, I think we can throw one together pretty quickly, I I think generally, kind of the same idea of mutually for sandbags, if they're available, first priority to protect public infrastructure, um, and then just working our way down based on threat and and value and that type of thing. You should do a nail stand or something, out in a couple weeks.
Yeah, that will allow us to answer quickly to cities who might all want them.
I think we talked about that when we talked about this in an upcoming WACO, we have these available, you know, maybe January, February, you make a presentation to WACO, these things are now available to you, but it's on a first curve, this is the policy, we've got first come, first served basis, this is policy going out, just so you know, that'd be great.
Perfect.
Commissioner Flor?
I would, do you need a motion, or just suggest we buy these?
I think.
I'm okay with that.
Consensus is fine.
We're good.
Great, go.
Fantastic, thanks, Commissioner, appreciate your time today.
Yeah, thank you all for your time and including me in the conversation.
Thank you, we'll have time now to just change out the room really quick.
We'll call your friend, Chad, real.
Yeah.
I asked, so.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it. Welcome back. We're now going to move to item four on our public meeting, which is the discussion regarding the N U E A contract. Ms. Thomas and Ms. Russell, I think based on the portfolio this is in, let's hold another minute until Gage is in here. There we go, N U E A contract, item four on our discussion for the day. We're a little behind the times, just for this. But go ahead, Ashlyn Tuckett, Lauren Thomas, let's go with you.
Okay, so this is the second time we brought this, it's, nothing has changed except one recital, we just updated a recital to master different provision in here, but otherwise, it's the same as the last time we talked. The big kind of point of discussion that we wanted to talk about today, um, and Commissioner Bolos, you brought this up, is whether or not this should have gone purchasing or through purchasing, and the answer is, is yes, it it probably should have gone through a bid process, um. It's very low risk if we go ahead and push this through, and the way that we wrote the agreement is that, at the end, so this goes to the end of twenty twenty-five, and um, we've written it so that upon renewal, we can go about this and put through purchasing when uh, when we want to renew it, so that we can get all of our ducks in a row, but just so you know, this, it really should have gone through purchasing.
If it shouldn't have, then why is it low risk?
Chris, I'm like.
There's so few companies out there, and we've had, uh, well, we weren't contracting directly with N U E A, N U E A, but in a way, we were through E D C Utah.
Right.
And so there's a short statute of limitations to challenge something like this, which is like thirty days. And so if we do get a challenge that comes back, we can just evaluate and just say, well, we'll just go through procurement.
Okay.
So it's one of those ones where we, you know, we like to catch all of them, this, it does happen occasionally, so it becomes a matter of, you know, risk tolerance. Um, where we have both counties on board with it, um, I really just don't see much of a challenge that anyone would be able to make.
Okay.
Who would we bid to?
So.
I mean, you say, put it out for bid.
Yes, yeah, we have to put it out for bid, and I mean, we basically just see what came back, yeah. So.
Sean Mill, Mike.
Right.
Yeah, well, probably, I mean.
It might, it could be.
We we got, we got rid of the E D C Utah that was, I mean, you could bid it, but you're gonna have to pay somebody that they're willing to do for free. I mean, we're not paying other than N U A contract that would continue, so, I mean, I don't, I don't see there's.
And there there's a lot, there might be not be anyone who would bid it.
Yeah.
Right.
And so if it comes back, then no one actually would bid it, it'd be a sole source, it's just that you just always can't tell.
Okay.
So, but I I do think it's low risk, I don't really think we're gonna expect a challenge from it.
Commissioner Bolos, any other questions?
I get them.
No, for any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
We're good to go ahead for the board? Very good, okay, great. Let's get ready and change out the room.
We gotta drive back on time.
Almost.
Wow.
Closer. Let's go back, uh, we're gonna change out the room, go to item number five, which is a discussion, discussion regarding D R Horton's request for a rezone from manufacturing M one residential R three located in the corner of Midland Drive and nineteen hundred West, project known as Midland Townhouses. You're probably familiar with this.
Yeah.
Is it the, it's gotta be Southwest Quarter?
No, Southeast.
So. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we don't, yeah. Yeah, we want to help Ogden Cities. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, but he's fine, remember. Yeah.
That's what it is.
John, no, oh my gosh.
Where, just stand the black seat around the wood, please, gentlemen?
We did.
Hey, Chris. For all those in the room, I'd like you to sit down and identify yourself, this is a work session, not a uh a public meeting, not a public hearing, so no public comments will be taken, but we appreciate you petitioners being here today. This is item number five, it's regarding D R Horton's request to rezone a manufacturing M one to a residential R three located in the corner of Midland Drive, nineteen hundred West. It's still annexed, it's not been in a it, they're it's the south east corner.
Southeast.
There on Midland Drive.
Yep.
Uh, we have, uh, why don't we just go around the room, Felix, why don't you introduce yourself, and then we'll just go around the room this way, thank you.
Really, you have a Reno with the Weaver County Planning?
I'm John Thornley with D R Horton.
Preston Mobius with D R Horton.
Christopher Crocker with the County Attorney's Office.
Ray For Overplanning.
John Wilkinson, Weaver County Community Development.
Liam Q, Attorney's Office.
Nate Ship.
I'm the landlord of the piece being discussed.
Okay, great. Great, the rest of the staff here, Commissioner Bolos, Commissioner Flor, and myself. Thank you very much. Alex, why don't you lead off on this, please, if you would, please, do you have a presentation to put on the screens?
Not, not really a presentation per se, uh, this is something that, I mean, I could bring up a map of if need be, but, um, so I think we're all pretty well familiar with this area, and what it is, it's currently considered by the county, it's just an unincorporated island. And, um, right now, as it sits, it's zoned M one, which manufacturing. The general plan for this area shows it potentially could become, um, some mixed residential. And so that's, that's what kind of led the developers in this direction to ask for a rezone from M one, what it is now, to R three. And, um, in throughout this process and to some of the discussions with the with D A, uh, D H Horton.
D R Horton.
D R Horton, is that, um, you know, they like to pursue, um, a rezone, so the the county, we re- we we reached out to the Ogden City manager, and so Ogden City is aware of their, of the developers' intentions. Um, they're also aware of the county with general plan, you know, the future land use map, and we we gave them all the information they needed, so Ogden City is still pretty adamant that they'd like this space to remain industrial. And, um, and so the that this space is also, I I don't know if I already mentioned that, this is part of the, this space is included as the Ogden City, uh, annexation plan.
Okay, great, super, for those of you, uh, John, Preston, uh, or Nate, you know, I'd like to start with you first, as the landlord.
That doesn't happen very often.
No, but let's start with you, go ahead.
We appreciate your time, uh, we understand, I I found out about this meeting this morning.
Okay.
So I'm coming in a little bit cold, otherwise I'd have more of a presentation, I will tell you that, uh, my partner and I purchased this property uh as we went through the process with the county in amending your long-range map. And as part of that, we had some specific conversations with your planning department about the possibility of putting residential homes a use on this piece, and there were some concerns, legitimate concerns that were brought up about access on some roads and some other things that we've been working through. But we, we did move forward in good faith with the understanding that this property would remain in the county, and that we would have the ability to come back in and talk to your planning department and ultimately you guys about the intended use of having added that specific residential use to the map for the long-range planning. So caught me a little bit off guard this morning when I got a call from our buyers who are residential builders, they hear that a different idea was being considered. Um, I'm still trying to get caught up to speed as to what all that means and what what it is, but that's why I'm here today, because it's a big deal to us.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, let's move on, uh. Rick, is there anyone in your department you'd like to speak to this before I turn the time over to John or to Preston?
Um, maybe just a little bit more of a reminder of your meeting you had a few weeks ago with Ogden City. Um, Commissioner Flor, I don't believe you were there.
No, I was out of town.
But they did express a strong desire to keep this manufacturing, um, our general plan, I went back and looked at the discussion as it became uh, for an R three option in the general plan, and it was really to look more at moderate income housing in this area, but there is a need, as Ogden City indicated, for manufacturing in this area as well. So, you know, it's kind of a balancing, um, of two different hats, as you look at this, you know, what is the best need for this area at the present time and. So, you know, it's kind of a balancing of two different hats, as you look at this, you know, what is the best need for this area at the present time, and for long range purposes as well. And it's planning looks at it, there's probably the option for both, where you have current manufacturing and future possible R three options in this area, so. There is some issues with utilities in this area, Bonne Vista is the. One that they have submitted that would provide water to this, and Central Weber is the one that would provide sewer to this area. There is no secondary water at the present time available for this piece, so that would have to be something that would have to be worked out. So I just wanted you to be aware of those things, but. The, the development that they're looking at is a triangle piece, and you may wanna talk a little bit about the R three options, but that's. What, you know, I can just remind you and bring to the table on this piece.
Very good, but who would like to start, John or Preston?
I can start.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just kind of following up, watched the video with Ogden City, and kind of how I understand it, your guys' main goals with this is to get rid of the islands. And to maintain a good relationship with Ogden. Coming from our side as the potential buyer, we kind of wanna know, you know, upfront, because this is a big decision, if, if it gets annexed into Ogden, you know, residential is out the door. So we kind of wanted the opportunity to discuss with you guys, get your temperature on it, and see, you know, potentially if there is other options available.
Great, John?
Yeah, thank you for your time, really, really appreciate you visiting with us. We see a need for residential, there's an incredible need for housing in this state. And. This is a great place and location, I believe, for residential housing, this will not be rented out. Anybody, it'll be sold to homeowners. Our desire and our philosophy is to sell to people who will live in the homes and not investors. So we see this as a great opportunity to provide housing and providing need that is. That's desperately needed in this state.
With that, would you need to restrict the property for a period of time?
If we needed to, yes.
Hey, Commissioner For.
So, yeah, I look at this right now, do you plan on putting the entire parcel into R three, or I think, Rick, you mentioned that some of this may still be M one or.
It, it is currently zoned and manufacturing in the county.
But your, your intent would be to put the whole thing into R three?
Right, yeah, rezone into R three would be the intent.
And this is townhomes, what are you doing?
Yeah. Yes, townhomes. Just kind of working with staff, you know, as we first kind of came through reviewing the code, we're kind of, our application is for, you know, the fourteen and a half units an acre, which the R three calls for. We've just kind of been following direction of staff in terms of open space, potential park donation. Their direction was, there's not any parks that service that area, so that doesn't really make sense, they kind of wanted to see open space within the community. For the residents, so those, those are kind of the general discussions we've had.
Okay, so Mike, I've looked at this before. Barely familiar with that chunk of ground, what are you gonna do for access, you didn't, you didn't, probably not dump out on nineteen hundred, I'm assuming.
So discussions with UDOT, we have two access points right now, one off of thirty third hundred South, and then one on nineteen hundred West. The discussion with UDOT is that they would approve that, there was some concerns about the distance between the stoplight at Midland and nineteen hundred. They said that, you know, they would basically approve a variance for that. Really, it would mainly come down to kind of the left turn lane, and if that would provide kind of a median barriers on both sides for that access point. But the discussions seemed like they would approve that.
So would they put another light there?
No.
On nineteen hundred?
No, no light.
Be a right in?
A right in, right out, potentially, or potentially a median lane in the middle for a left turn.
So you'd put most of your traffic out on thirty three hundred?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just kind of how the residents and how it flows, in terms of freeway access, you're most likely coming off in thirty third hundred. So.
So you'd be right in, right out, okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Bolus.
A little worried about traffic.
Yeah, I'm a little worried about traffic too, and also worried about the island. I know that the, the future uses don't match up between us and Ogden, which is unfortunate, because I would really like to see us get rid of that island, but like you said. Residential's off the table if that happens. If we allow residential. In accordance to our general plan, future land use map, then. Will the annexation ever take place, I mean, maybe it will after it's already built and done, and then. Ogden City would take it, I don't know.
I don't know, your question.
I think, anything else? I think, you know, some of the preliminary maps that we've, we've been showing over the last six, eight years, shows as Ogden City continues to improve their airport, that this would be a parcel that they've. Potentially, even with the track going through it, the railroad track going through it, they would potentially want to get. Have that as access, but. With that. And, and just in full disclosure, some of the stuff that I've seen shows a road going underneath, going underneath.
Hinkley?
Hinkley, thank you, I knew, I knew it was. Underneath Hinkley going over into the airport, so they could do potentially parking or something else over in that area. Or Uber lot, or some other kind of a lot type of a thing going over into there. With everything that we have right now, from my position, everything that we have with Ogden City going, it's important for us to be good partners. For me, I've given a commitment to them to, to. Uphold their wish or desire, and to keep that so that it stays in manufacturing, I think that makes the best. That makes the best sense for that area up there, so that's where I, I plan on keeping my word with Ogden City.
Okay.
So if the two of you wanted it. There you go. And that's where I am.
I appreciate that, I'm not willing to say yes or no right now, I mean, but I'd, I'd want something from you, I'd have some discussions with. Some of our UDOT folks, but.
And secondary water, because we don't approve any residential without secondary water.
Well, and then all, yeah, all the well served, I mean, I've held up a couple of the projects because they weren't ready and well served, so. I'm, I'm quite away from saying a yes, I'm not a definite no at this point in time, but if it is, I'm quite a ways from saying yes. Okay, so.
I don't think I'm a definite no either, but I, but I always. I always feel like it's in the best interest of the county to uphold what our plan was. I just don't know what went into that plan, and if it was kind of an island that, oh, you know, it stands by itself, maybe we'll put housing because there's a need for housing, I don't know how that discussion went.
There wasn't a lot of discussion when I went back and looked at this, because this is an island out there, and so. There wasn't tons to give you, other than that it meets some moderate, moderate income housing needs.
Right.
But that was pretty much it, most of the discussion was, you know, in the, the core of the central or western Weber area.
Yeah, that's why I just kind of pictured it as being. Stand by itself, that wasn't really part of the. You know, a whole general discussion, and I don't wanna, and I don't wanna put the wrong thing there, because we'll have a new interchange which that goes, that connects with Midland, right, and then the potential of the airport. Just if it's the wrong use. Residential there, I don't wanna make that mistake either, just because that's what our general plan says.
We, we are interested in making sure all the islands are absorbed into cities, especially things like this. One of the plays we did make was on that, and it should have been on that video that you said you watched, is we asked the city to annex it now, but they haven't done any. As far as I know, any movement that way, then watching this video may help. Move that along a little bit more, but I don't know what that'll be, so with that, with no. Unless there's any other discussion.
I do have a question for the owner, so. By my.
Please.
So I'm assuming since you're here, you have an interest in working with these gentlemen, or are you just here for information?
I wish I was just here, no, I'm here because I have an interest in working with these gentlemen.
Okay.
We would love the opportunity to come have the conversation about the housing, because if these gentlemen walk out of the room, I'm still your owner.
Right.
I'd still like to figure out the right use, I've had lengthy conversations with Ogden City about their manufacturing ideas, and. I've got some real concerns with some of their ideas that they've thrown at us.
How long ago were those discussions?
Probably within the last year.
Within the last year, because they've had quite a significant cha, change or shift in economic development leadership over there.
I don't know that I talked to the new guys.
I would be.
Always with the old guys.
Yeah, big shift.
But the, the sense I got then was, and this was then, was that they were looking to. Perform on their airport plan. And that they had given a great incentive package to properties that were within the plan. Or that this was a defensive move. To push out competing ideas and uses and things that might get in the way of the overall plan, and that's what they wanted to do by annexing this property into their city. I'm just telling you how it felt, so. We worked really hard with these gentlemen to try and find. A solution to what we feel is a critical need that we're facing in this state, and that's housing. And we feel like that would be the right use, but we're open to the conversation, I'd love to sit down with. Everybody and try and figure it out, so. We've cut, if we've got it wrong, then we'll figure it out, but I'd, I'd really like to have the dialogue and the conversation the right way before we just. I'd be nervous for you to say, yeah, let's make a decision today, so guess what I'm saying?
Yeah, you can have, you can, you're welcome to having those individual conversations, no problem.
Does that answer your question, or?
I think it would, I think it would be helpful though to you, also for you, and just, just saying what I know, because we've seen it quite, quite a big shift over there at Ogden City.
Sure.
And, and it might be helpful for you moving forward.
I'm gonna give you my card.
Okay.
I'm Beckmeyer Development Director, ask them what schedule's in time, we can have that conversation.
Okay.
Great, if there's nothing else then. Hearing none, and we'll move on, thanks for coming and visiting.
Thanks, Jared. We'll be in touch, I guess.
Thank you.
Well, I don't, I'll give you mine.
We'll bring.
In fact, you'll see some of them on the way, on the way out of here, I'll have an entertaining motion to saunter for five minutes.
Second.
All in favor? I have to be saunter.
Yeah, I like to have, no. Makes sense.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. So this is a discussion regarding the airport CRA. Ms. Russell, Sarah Mees from Ogden City, Brian Conde. And we're missing David Sawyer, but we have Chris Crockett here. Oh, there's David Sawyer right there.
I guess speaking of the devil.
Oh, Jared too. Wow.
Wow.
Perfect.
Come on in. Gentlemen, we're welcoming you here. Thanks. Stephanie, would you lead out the discussion, make as soon as where necessary?
We're happy to uh have have you guys meeting today. We've been meeting uh the economic development finance committee has met a couple of times with um Ogden City to uh to start discussions uh uh to talk about this airport series. We'd had some uh discussions about it last year, we put it on hold. Um, just this past week, I was able to provide them with our new policy, so everyone's familiar with that. Um, they put this presentation originally together about a month or two ago, presented to Economic Development Finance Committee. We asked them to go update it particularly with infrastructure lifts, so that we can see what type of an infrastructure need this uh this airport would need. Um, and what would constitute uh regional infrastructure? So um I'm gonna go ahead and let, are you, is it David or or Sarah? Sarah's presenting. We'll let Sarah do the presentation, and then um we'll have some time for questions and and for some feedback. They liked some feedback on the presentation.
Great. Well, thank you commissioners for uh giving us the opportunity to continue this discussion with you about the airport CRA. Um, this is really important to us. It's high on our priority list as far as premium economic opportunity, not just for the city, but really throughout northern Utah. Um, we think this is just really pretty, a pretty amazing regional asset for us here. Um, it's it's not every day that you find an airport with this much developable land left um on runway. Um, and we really want to make sure that we're making the most of that opportunity. Um, as you're probably already aware, we're focused on three pillars at our airport. Um, we want to continue to sustain the general aviation users that we have at the airport. We want to add to our commercial air service. And then we want to attract aerospace and aviation related companies, particularly to the west side of the Ogden Airport. It's gonna continue to need some investment to really reach its full potential. And a great example of this, I think we've actually already started to see with some of the state funding that has gone towards infrastructure improvements on the west side of the field. Um, since we received that funding and starting with those improvements, the level of interest that we've seen from companies has really gone up significantly. I think for a long time, we're showing them plans on paper. They're like, that's nice, but you may not be able to meet our timeframes. And so having the infrastructure in the ground and being a lot more shovel ready has really helped us get more traction with companies that are looking at at coming here to northern Utah.
Uh, next slide. My, yeah.
Yeah. I have to back.
No, thank you.
There you go.
So this is just kind of a recap. This is looking back at some of the parameters that were set in the original project area plan and budget for this CRA that was adopted by our um redevelopment agency board at the city. Um, and I think the main difference, if we're able to resume this now, would be the tax increment collection period that start date would bump back. Um, to be twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. But as you can see, we're really looking at, um, and this would be a full build out if we really maximize the full development potential of the airport. This is the increase in assessed value that we would see and the increase in tax increment that we would see to all of the taxing. Um, the development objectives, these are from the project area plan. Um, so these really haven't changed. Um, again, our focus is on improving infrastructure, runways, roadways, those kinds of things that get us ready to be business at the Ogden Airport. Um, we also want to develop vacant land, support the development of that land in underutilized areas. And the goal of all that is to support aerospace and defense industry, aviation business, all of those things that can really generate um high quality, high wage jobs for residents of the county. So not just of the city, but of the county and really across northern Utah. Um, a lot of the interests that we've seen in the west side of the Ogden Airport um are from pretty big job creation projects. Um, and so we definitely benefit of that um for residents from across the region, as well as um very significant capital investment and growing the tax base that we have here in the area. So again, this is kind of looking back at the project area plan, and we had outlined some of the ways that we anticipated using tax increment within the airport CRA. Um, the use of tax increment at that time was informed in part by our twenty twenty airport master plan. Um, so there have been some changes to the airport master plan since that time. Um, but we've continued to update our airport capital improvement plan on a yearly basis. So the capital improvements that were identified in the master plan have continued to be updated um on a yearly basis. Um, and really the bottom line here is that that need for infrastructure investment at the airport remains uh vital to our ability to to make most of this asset. Um, so we would be looking at using tax increment for um infrastructure improvements, as well as we're um in some cases, direct incentives for some of the companies that we're trying to bring out here to the Ogden Airport. Um, so this table here, we've tried to go through and identify some of our most pressing infrastructure needs at the airport. Um, and provide cost estimates. And in total, we're looking at about forty seven million dollars in infrastructure improvements. Um, and I'll just make one comment here. The ACIP, that is that yearly annual capital or airport capital improvement plan, it's done on a ten year basis. So we forecast out what capital improvements are going to be needed at the airport. And there's a portion of those projects that we may be able to receive FAA funding for. Um, but we still, as a local sponsor, have to participate um generally about. Um, and the the estimate that you see there is what our minimum local participation in those projects would be. So if the FAA decides not to fund a project, our local cost may increase. If they just push it to the bottom of their priority list, but it's something that needs to get done, our share of that cost may increase. Um, and then the other projects that you see here are things that we do not have on our ACIP. Um, but that we do know need to get done to make uh make the most of our development opportunity at the airport. And I'll talk about some of those just in a little bit greater detail here.
So about forty six doesn't include your sewer needs.
Um, it includes some of our sewer projects. So there's um two sewer projects on there. Um, there is some additional sewer work that's needed in Airport Road that we don't have a cost estimate for yet. So that number could increase depending on that project. Um, so I'll just start with a couple of things here on the west side of the field. Um, this is where we've been focusing a lot of our corporate recruitment efforts. Um, this is a large aircraft apron, a portion of which has been uh has received some federal funding, which is awesome. That puts us in a really good spot there. Um, but there are still some utility improvements that are needed over here. So we've got to bring the sewer down from Hinkley um to service these new hangers that would be located around that apron. Um, and then we're also looking at some upgrades that are actually needed just north of Hinkley. And those are needed to help us provide adequate capacity on the west side of the airport. Um, we are also looking at how to fund the second phase of this cargo apron. So that's something we've included on our list. And then this taxiway was put in with the state funds. And to service the developable area down here, we will need to continue that down further to the south. Um, so that's another infrastructure need that we've identified there on the west side.
Don't you have at the end of F, you're gonna have to have a roll up area?
Um, so there are a few connections where we would need to come back over to the runway here. Um, and then we have um also looked, some of these projects need some apron area.
Okay.
Um, so far, like the folks we're talking to for this developable area, we've looked at that as a project cost because it would just be for their use. But if we had, for example, more smaller users, that could potentially be a shared cost.
Okay.
Um, moving over to the east side of the field. Um, we are looking at a twenty four inch water main upgrade that would actually connect from our new well here on Airport Road. And would actually loop up Airport Road down Hinkley and tie into an existing sixteen inch line that we have over here. Um, as we mentioned, there are some sewer upgrades that are gonna be made. We're still working on exactly what that looks like, but it's it's something that we have on the list for now, um just knowing that's coming. And then there's quite a bit of utility improvements that are going to be needed in our general aviation area. Um, so things like storm drain and sewer improvements. Um, two projects on our list that we don't have exact locations for yet, the power is becoming a very real constraint out there at the airport, which will sound familiar to many of you. Um, we have plans to bring five point four megawatts of service over here to the west side of the field, but with um the needs of some of our existing some of the projects that we're looking at now, we think the need for that is actually going to be even greater. Um, and so we're kind of at a point based on our conversations with Rocky Mountain Power, where we either have to bring new distribution lines into the site, um which would involve right of way acquisition and be fairly costly. Or we may be looking at a new substation. So we don't know yet exactly where that would go, but we know that that's going to be an infrastructure need and expense that we have at the airport.
I think one of the things to add on that with that substation is that not only if that substation was to go in, I don't, that doesn't only just help the airport. Because right now, the five point four megawatts, the Rocky, the the city already has tied up and confirmed. Um, they're saying that's all the available usage left in that area. Um, if you go to a new substation and you can hope you can open up a lot of power by transitioning to transmission and get off distribution, which would not only help this area of the airport, this area of Ogden, but it also helps Roy um and West Haven, those other areas right there, because it now um provides additional capacity that doesn't exist today.
So you guys are, you guys are in the feasibility piece for the existing five?
We've already done that.
Oh, you've done it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we already have that committed.
That's wonderful.
Um, and they say that's all that's available right now in that specific area. So this would help. Um, you know, if that goes through.
Yeah, because that's some of our areas are twenty thirty five, twenty thirty one, you know, so that's fantastic.
Yeah, because Williams wants to expand. Uh, we're actually competing with two other states for their expansion right now.
Okay.
And power's a big issue. But if, you know, if we could get the substation in there and get them on straight off of get them on a distribution, um, then that opens up that entire load to the whole rest of the area. And so I I think it's worth noting, it doesn't just necessarily assist just the airport. It actually it helps everybody in that.
And that's what we would consider regional infrastructure.
So I won't.
Including the island.
And Sarah, could I tell you, hit the plus on there, just let's see.
Yeah.
Just for you.
And I won't strain everybody's eye on this too much, but we did just want to show you guys what our ten year ACIP looks like. This is where um the number on the earlier table came from. So this is looking at ten years. Um. So we've identified projects here. So you can see that cargo apron is a good example here. So this um is actually phase one of that west side apron. Um, we've received four and a half million dollars in federal funds for that. And then we'll be required to make a local contribution to that project as well. Um, so what we showed on the earlier table is the the total local contribution that we'll have to make for these ten years of projects at a minimum. So um that's that's in the slide we provided. We're happy to answer any questions about that, but I won't spend too much time on that here just because it's very time.
I actually want to send you guys the presentations so you can.
And then we have information here about the projects we've been working on out at the airport. And this is a really big part of the why. So this is why we're seeing the need for some of these infrastructure improvements. Um, and these are the companies we've worked with that have taken real serious looks at the west side of the Ogden Airport. Um, some of these are still active. I would say the the biggest one that we're working right now is that project Amelia up top. Um, they came for a site visit about a month ago, and we're actually uh one of two or three finalists for this project. Um, this would be over six hundred jobs, very high quality, high paying jobs, and um a hundred and thirty five million dollars in CapEx. And that's the type of investment that we really see growing the tax base of all the entities that are participating in this project. At the end of the day, that's going to be new tax revenue that all of us can recognize as taxing entities. Um, and so you can see on here, there's a few others that we're working right now. And then I've included some of the ones that we haven't landed in recent years as well, just to give you guys an idea. I mean, we have a strong pipeline of interest. Um, and as long as we keep at it, we're gonna land one of these companies at the airport, provided we have everything in place we need to support them. I'll say on these two, um, the direct incentive is important to some of these larger projects. We're in competition with multiple states frequently for these. And so that's where understanding that the county wants to focus its tax increment on the infrastructure side, we could potentially look at putting the city's portion of tax increment into something like a direct incentive for um the land project. Um, and then we talked a little bit already about the regional benefits here, but again, that that growing the tax values, values that really has impact across the region, um as well as the jobs, um the opportunity to create um a significant number of high quality, high paying jobs. Um, and then we also are excited about some of the transportation benefits. So we were chatting at the beginning of the meeting about the upcoming NBA, and then some of the opportunities to look at new transportation modes like advanced air mobility, and thinking about how the airport could be a hub for that and servicing um while outside of city limits up to potentially the ski resorts or other parts of the valley. So all in all, a pretty significant economic impact um across the region here. Um, so our request today for your consideration, um this table shows um what had previously been discussed with the city and the other taxing entities. And we would ask the county to consider continuing its participation rate at ninety percent for the airport CRA. Um, and that's in consideration of the significant infrastructure lift that we have out of the airport. Um, as well as the very significant regional impact um that must be from from those three pillars that we talked about, and in particular from some of the uh recruitment opportunities that we have out there.
And that would cap at seventeen million?
Yeah.
Are those participation rates with the other entities all locked in?
They are, yeah.
Central Weaver's giving you there, okay?
Mm-hmm. We've got interlocals, I believe, with everybody, um maybe we set up.
I agree. What's the timeframe on that? I can't remember seven, so.
So uh currently, we were running out through twenty forty seven.
Okay.
Um. Twenty forty seven, and we shift that start date originally, we're looking at twenty twenty three, we'd likely just shift that to twenty twenty five.
So it's a ninety five at twenty five years? Is that what you're talking about?
Um, so for the county, it would be ninety percent. Um, and with the adjusted start date, we'd be looking at um twenty two years. We start in twenty twenty five.
Okay. There's the ask. But David Brown told you it was gonna be fifty percent for ten years. Now I'm kind of. Richard Ford.
A couple of questions. So obviously, that exceeds the shots we are quality that I think you now bred. So that, you know, gives me a little pause there. I don't, in my opinion, ninety percent's a little the big stretch, but uh let's go back to, you know, again, that policy directs to regional infrastructure, not direct incentives. I'd be real concerned, and that's the reason that policy is that I don't think it's, I don't think we need to. If it's a, if the assets managed right, if you have the right property, we don't have to incentivize the company. So I would be opposed using any of the Weaver County portion for a direct incentive.
And we would only use city or school district or other taxing entity increment.
And then one of your first slides there showed that you're starting a demolition. How does this impact those existing users out there with hangers? I, the other part I get concerned about. We've all had a number of calls from users out there that Ogden City is basically going to terminate leases or terminate rights at some of those hangers that have been around a while. Um, so.
So maybe um Jared can speak to this as well.
Just explain to me, you know, again, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna be a no vote. Unless you can show me that you're working with that group out there
Right.
um to protect their rights, because they do have rights.
And just to clarify, we're not, you know, not approving demolitions here. What we're showing here is um that we know we can actually improve the utilities that are servicing some of our existing hangers.
Yeah, you could terminate their lease. I mean, some of them are on month to month leases. So you could have them go away tomorrow once we approve the the CRA. That's a big concern to mine, because I have a number of calls from people saying, you know, if you approve this, they're gonna come in and we have to be gone in thirty days, which is not right.
Well, it's something that has to be worked through. So we're still working through that advisory group. We have another meeting this month to go through that. I think we've made a lot of good headway. I anticipate we're going to be modifying our Title Eight. We're gonna be modifying our leases and things like they are. But the one thing that we cannot commit to that they keep asking for is they want some kind of guarantee in lease that basically says at the end of my lease, what do I get? Or that I get another lease. The problem with that is, is you can't really put a guarantee in a lease for the future lease, because once the lease is over, the lease is over. So you need to, we have to put that in like our administrative rules. So there's a lot of things that we're working on to try to change from ordinance and put them in administrative policy so that they're a little bit more flexible, giving us something to work with. Um, trying to provide what kind of surety and guarantee we can, that if you have reached the end life of your lease, then what does that picture look like for you forward? Um, what are the opportunities and what are they? Um, you know, what can we do? It's a delicate balance, something that we're trying to work through. Um, it's difficult because with um the guarantees that we have to provide to the FAA, we have to try to balance both of them. Because if we violate any of those, um, then we don't get any funding. Um, and that's, that's a big bill in the airport. And so I actually have been in all of those meetings, and I will continue to be in all of those meetings to the end, and we're not done yet. I don't know what the the end goal looks like yet. But I know the meetings have been very positive. We're getting really good feedback from the stakeholders that are involved. So we have on that group by six representatives that have tenant or that are tenants that have hangers out there. Um, plus our side aviation legal counsel, um our outside representative. Um, and it's also been hired that's um preparing and putting together a bunch of those documents and those different things. And so our, at the end of the day, we have to operate it as an airport, and we will, and meet our requirements, but we also want to try to make sure we have a good balance. And that's the message that we're sending to them. Is we're not trying to boot you out. We're not trying to kick you out. We're not trying to kill general aviation. Um, but we have to make sure that we follow our rules that we're given and then give as much flexibility to them as we can. And so it's still, it's still all in work. And I, I don't know where to land, but I the meetings have been great. It's far more positive than it has been. I don't know where to land, but I, the meetings have been great, it's far more positive than it has been.
Good to know.
I would say, I felt exactly that Commissioner Ford. Up until uh, well, really, last six months have been, there's been a, there's been a change. There's some of the, there, there are quite a few guy hanger owners that I know. Uh, that I've had discussions with, and they're optimistic more so than they've been in years. Some of them have owned uh, uh, hangers for a lot of decades, and they're very optimistic moving forward. Uh, some of the work you guys have done have been really good, and I won't get into the details of the owners. But I can think a half dozen, at least a half dozen of the guys that I'm in uh, foster communication with still. And so they're going well, and I commend you for the work that you're doing. It's, it is absolutely. A different tack than what's been in the past, so it's not that we're going to get into navigational steering and ship and. And and sailboats, but that's, it's been really good. You're making progress.
No, thank you, we, we hope to continue down that path, that's where we're striving for.
Thank you, Commissioner Bollos, questions or comments?
We have a question for Stephanie, this um, falls outside of the new policy. So I want your thoughts on the, on the comparison between this proposal and our new policy and why we, why we would entertain this.
Great question.
So when we, when we, when they brought this to the, I'm not really like the finance committee, that was, we were in the process of drafting the policy. And that, that um, discussion was had by the committee, and the committee's looking. We, we advised um, Ogden City to come back and show us what the infrastructure lift really did look like. Um. The committee's. The committee's on the fence. Because it doesn't match the policy, but at the same time, Ogden was able to present. A pretty good, please flip back to your infrastructure slide, a pretty good uh, assessment of what that infrastructure looks like. And the regional potential that this does have. Um, this airport does have regional economic potential, which is part of the policy, as well as regional infrastructure. Um, as it relates to some of the additions that they're making to that. Um, it can become a hub that not only uh, recruits. Business for the Ogden Airport, but potentially recruits some manufacturing for unincorporated West Weaver as well. Based on the types of businesses that are looking in the area. Uh, we share, we share recruitment efforts together in that regard. Um. So the reason I scheduled the meeting today is we really wanted to have an open and honest discussion about. What it really means to bring in re- regional infrastructure as it relates to a project. And um, our recommendation from the committee is that they come back with a, a lower percentage. But there's a caveat to that, we don't feel that seventeen million. County contribution is a big ask compared to the forty-six lift that they have, if that makes sense. So. That's where we were on the fence, seventeen million is not a huge ask from the county to contribute to that forty-six. And that's a forty-six plus, because you've got additional sewer, and I can tell you right now, that additional sewer is going to, at, at the very minimum, ten to fifteen. So. We'd basically, we'd be basically paying for sewer out there is really where. And our policy does reflect that, that we, they have to show where they used our money. So every year they'd have to report back to the county, right, we used your county dollars for this part of the project. So there is some flexibility in the policy. For you to go outside the parameters, but it has to show a significant regional economic impact and significant regional infrastructure lift.
Mr. Wilkinson, I'd like to go to you next, does that represent what you remember, and do you have any additional comments between?
Yeah, yeah, it does represent what I remember, this has been going on for quite some time. And there's, it's been a lot of back and forth, I think what this really comes down to is. Do we see this as a regional, a regional project with a regional need? Is the ask appropriate to that need? Uh, what are we, I, I don't know, Sarah, what we're generating right now for Weaver County off of. The CRA area in, in taxes, but I don't think it's very much. So giving ninety percent of not very much over time. As opposed to ninety percent of something that's generating us actual income for the county that we need and use is a different discussion. This may be more appropriate than something else where a ninety percent ask is being given, and we did have that discussion as, as part of our. Our committee meetings.
And this would have a cap on seventeen million, so they could actually, if they, if they got gamebusters in the next five years. Our part's done.
Yeah, and as Stephanie said, uh, with a cap at seventeen million, we were comfortable with that, so. That's, that's the, the basis of our discussion.
David, we're going to need you to settle down, you've been moved out.
I know, I know, sorry.
Well, but can you give us any comments, anything you'd like to say?
No, I just, uh, other than, you know, we're just excited about moving forward on some of these improvements and. And we, you know, as you guys know, this, this last year's uh. Uh, it's been pretty tough on the, on the airport in terms of communications and the media and so forth. And uh, we know that there's a lot more positivity happening there and a lot more opportunity than is represented. In uh, in the communications out there, and we just are excited to be able to show that. So the continued investment and, and um, momentum for the airport is, is really important to us. And, and so we're, uh, we're just hoping that we can. Hopefully the vision has kind of been shared here at a high level, you, you guys can catch some of that and, and feel good about supporting it, so.
Great.
And one of the things I want to stress about our new policy is that it allows the commission to create. Exactly what you want in the interlocal. The verbiage, the conditions, the time period, and to be able to speak to, if you decide to go above and beyond them. The, the benchmark policy, it allows, it allows us to put that into the interlocal so that it's spoken to.
I also want to say that we did speak to our finance team about the reporting out on this. And you know, the, the, the challenge associated with reporting specifically or. The county's t- t- tax increment financing contribution and how that relates specifically to our infrastructure. Expenses and how that's being spent, and they said that while it would be a challenge, they can see. They, they don't envision a problem reporting out to you guys on how that looks each year. So they're capable of providing that kind of documentation.
What I'd like to see, uh, with the, I'm kind of just leading out here a little bit, what I'd like to see is for. All you all, which is a plural for you all, to have, have you uh, get our team on board where they feel comfortable in making a recommendation to the commission.
So I was going to ask, I, I would love to see a recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, let's.
And it sounds like you're not too far from that? No, no, we just wanted to get this out in private before we kept going down the road. So that you could have an idea, and, and we had asked for this update, uh, you guys had asked for that last year. And so this is, was a good opportunity to get, get that on your agenda and, and look at it, so you can actually see an update of. Of, and the direction that this project's actually going in.
And as part of that, I'd like to see the details that we just talked about, where it could go, where it could not go. Uh, I'd like to see some reports from that advisory group, whatever they could provide there that shows that. You know, they're, they're playing well in the sand blocks, and I could talk to those people too, but I'd just like to. Uh, have a baseline of what far is what's happened there, um, and then. Just be part, because that has to be part of the table, I mean, you guys probably don't want to talk about it, but you know, uh, it needs to be talked about. There's a number of users out there that, uh, as Commissioner Harvey said, it, it has improved. But I would hate to see, once this happens and it goes back to that, okay, we don't care if you're here, you're going to be gone. I would just like some type of assurance that we don't go back to that mentality, that you're working with that group, doing what's possible to make their lives easier. Um, instead of harder, which is what it was before. So anyway, I'd like to see that before I can.
Okay.
Do anything.
I think it's good to know, I, without this, I would say there's. We're not going to go back to that, that's, that's the honest truth, we're not going to go back to the way it was. But to a degree, I would say it's more possible that it might without doing something like this than if we go forward. And, and what I mean by that, what I'm trying to reference is the fact that we have to do these things regardless. And how they end up getting funded is always the big question mark, right? And so if we don't have something like this to help offset that. And how, how far do you push a lease rate, right, right, trying to figure out how to make a pencil, and so.
Sure.
I don't mean that in a negative context, like, hey, we're going to go drive all these people away because we want to make hard to do business, it's, it's the balancing effort of all of that.
No, I get that, I get it, okay, 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 any other comments or questions?
So goodbye.
I have some. Do we have time?
Mr. Connie, yes, go ahead.
So, yeah, the, the airport's a great asset, and it's only going to progress as. Quick as we can feed it at the appropriate time. So all of the state, the FAA, the city, the county, hopefully other communities are behind it. But that also includes the tenants and the users of the airport. So I'm going to be looking at the rates, fees and charges to make sure that they're appropriately set. And relevant to the charges, so they will also be helping with this, this fee. The, the thing about the hangers, we are, we are tied to grant assurances. And the one thing that we can't have is life safety issues, and I've already seen some hangers that are not safe. The fire marshal won't go into several of them because they're fire traps. So the life safety issues, we're going to address first. And I think everyone is on board with that, but that may cause some of the, the, the um, tenants out there to complain. But it sends the right message to those companies we're trying to attract. If we allow life safety issues to go on at the airport, what is that going to tell these companies? They don't change their fuel filters, they don't have their lighting system, they don't have their pavement maintenance. It sends the wrong message to the companies we're trying to attract if we allow life safety issues out there. So we will, we, I think that's me, we'll do it with the, um, I, I'm the neutral party here. So I'm going to reach out to that community, to all the boards that we've put together. Uh, and that's going to be my message, hey, we're going to move forward together, everyone's got a. You know, the rising tide lifts all ships, everyone, including the tenants, will have to help. Uh, but one thing we can't do is anything that's life safety. That just sends a wrong message to the group we're trying to attract.
You've got a lot of pressure with the Wasatch Peaks and some other folks coming in too that want some space, so there's, there's quite a bit.
And they're going to help pay too.
Actually, as well, they should, because anytime you have a developer come in and do something, there's going to have to be some improvements and they can put it towards kitty.
Yeah, well, they're going to benefit.
Yeah, oh yeah, and all of these things up here, most of them are not grant eligible. So they're funded by the local governments only, everything that's grant eligible for federal fund, we're already going after that. And we're going to use that on infrastructure that's eligible, like the runways and the ramps, taxiways, lighting system that's outdated. Um, but the, this stuff up here is not grant eligible, so that's why Jared's saying the city's going to fund it. More funding we can get, the sooner the farther down along the road we can get. And we don't expect it to happen overnight, we're talking three to five years.
So.
Well, any other questions? Great, thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll look for a motion for item seven.
I have more thing to adjourn at the chair.
Second.
All in favor?
I am.
We're adjourned. Okay, Brian, white over white, you're high as a kite, red over red, you're probably dead.
Correct.
Exactly, did I say that correctly?
Yes.
White over red is the proper light.